I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin the meeting with a moment of silence, and as we do, if we could remember, a few people who have passed since our last meeting. Robert Valancourt of Whitman, passed on July 10, 2023. He was one of our election workers. And of course, Joseph Patrick Dreyer, who was related to Mike Hayes and Michelle Hayes, Mike, the longtime moderator. And also Dan Donovan, who was the brother of Lisa Riley, who worked for years in the fire department. If we could remember them in our thoughts. And also, every time you drive through near the railroad station, you see a lot of flowers. And let's keep Ava in mind, too, as well. It's been two months, but her parents must be going through, and her family must be going through awful things. This meeting is being recorded and televised by the Internet Cable Access. I'd like a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Accept correspondence in the read file, a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public forum, now is the time for anyone to speak, if they want to, about something that's not on the agenda.
I have a letter call, if I may read it from a resident. I can show it to you first, if you'd like to.
No, go ahead. I can listen to you while you read it.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. It says, "My name is Dennis Chick. I live at 36 Lantz Ave. There is a spot in Whitman that most of the citizens of Whitman don't even know exists or where it is. It is called the Dawn Flaherty Trail, and it is on Route 14, Auburn Street, on the right-hand side just before you start up the incline to Washington Street. It was dedicated by the Conservation Committee quite a few years ago, and over the years it had deteriorated to a point where it was almost impossible to walk it, and the sign at the beginning of the trail was pretty much unreadable. But recently, thanks to a young man named Jake Capoletti," and I apologize if I don't have that exactly right, "of Scout Troop 59, the trail and the sign have been brought back to life as part of an Eagle Scout project. I think that a proclamation of some kind should be presented to Jake at some point in the near future, thanking him for his hard work restoring this Whitman landmark. Thank you." Well, geez, thank you, Jake Capoletti, Troop 59. What a kind thing to do.
We could work on that for our next meeting.
Absolutely.
Get a proclamation ready.
How am I saying?
And Dan wanted to say something, too.
Yeah. For anybody who doesn't know, I had a bit of a medical situation, and I want to thank Laura Howe, who was basically almost in front of her house, and her husband Scott, for her quick reaction in calling the police and fire. And I'd like to thank Lieutenant Ford, who was the driver, and firefighter paramedic Matt Bush, firefighter paramedic Scott Nazarella, and firefighter paramedic Stephen Foster, because basically, they saved my life, and I want to thank them for what they did. And I can't say enough about our Whitman Fire Department. Outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And we're really happy that you could make that announcement in the public forum, instead of using it in a moment of silence.
Yeah, true. Thank you.
Because it was...
It was scary.
Yeah, it was scary. It was scary. It scared us all.
Thank you. Laura, get her hug.
We have an unbelievable police and fire department, and God bless, angels were watching over Dan.
I'd like a motion to approve meeting minutes, open session, June 20, 2023.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve open session minutes of July 11, 2023.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm getting upstate for that one.
We now have reached 6:05. We have one, two, three, four, five executive sessions that we're going to get into in a minute, or two minutes after I read them all. And then we'll be coming back into open session once they're done. Not sure exactly how long it will last. The first executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Exception 1, to discuss the physical condition or mental health rather than professional competence of a police department employee. Second executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21, Exception A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. The third executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Whitman Police Union, Mass Cop Local 494, if an open meeting have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares. Executive session, and the last one, no, second to last, an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And the last one, an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. And at that meeting, we're going to be approving the executive session minutes from July 11, 2023. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second?
Yes.
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 We're in executive session, and we'll be back in a little while. Okay, we're back in open session. And under all business, we'd like to announce that on July 11, 2023, an executive session, we approved a Class II Auto Dealers License for Platinum Automotive Sales Corporation, Colin Emerson, 10 Buckley Avenue. And we voted to rescind. And we've announced that right now, because we just approved the executive session minutes. And we need a motion now to rescind the Class II Auto Dealers License for Platinum Automotive Sales under the name of Carolyn Snow at the same location.
All right, I'll make that motion.
Second. Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Yes.
Aye. So now it's Colin Emerson's Platinum Automotive Sales. And that's taken care of, thank God. Chairman's report? I don't really have much of a report. I'd just like to remind you all that on the... If I can find my piece of paper. I want to remind you of the opioid session. The... I'm doing a Mitch McConnell right now.
Vigil.
What? Yeah. Isn't that funny? The vigil, because that can happen to me. The vigil on... I'm looking for the date. I think it's August. August what? It's a Tuesday in August. It's the last Tuesday in August. There's the vigil that pays attention to those people who have passed because of opioid issues, substance use issues. And it's something that I encourage everybody to go to. Also noticed, I'd also like to congratulate the school committee on their meeting last week, in which they listened to Chris DiOrio's presentation, where he asked them to do three things with respect to pride, to gay pride. And they had a discussion, and they voted to do so. It was a well-done meeting. And I'd like to just acknowledge that they did a good job that night, and as did he. There was one glitch. One of our members, Sean, and he's been public about this, he was not recognized in what he thought was open forum to discuss it. And he's written a letter to the Express, and he's brought some attention to the practice of what happens during open forum. I perfectly understand why that staffer, the chairperson, is starting to conduct the meetings the way she does. Having been a veteran of the school committee for a long time, I'm used to going to meetings that last from 7 to 11, twice a month, and inevitably extending the curfew past 11 to do the work. There's a lot of work for them to do. It's a committee of 10 people, and I can understand her wanting to make sure that the meeting time is spent on the meeting, rather than to have an extended open forum. We do things a little bit differently here, though. We give the public chance to talk, to introduce us to matters that are not on the agenda. And even when we're going through the agenda, we've also allowed people to talk. I think we'll probably continue to do that, although that can be fraught with some complications and complications at times. And I'm just going to tell a little story. I come to call years and years ago, when I was on the K-8... Actually, I was a chair of the K-8 School Committee, and this is prior to we're becoming the region K-12. What was going on at that time, and this is prior to education reform, actually, sometime in the... Sometime before 1991, where the state was going through for 9 through 12 systems, a curriculum that deals with health and sex. And one of the things that was up for discussion in this curriculum, that each school committee was asked to okay, was whether or not condoms should be distributed, be available for students, because to protect them from disease. I had a friend at that time, who was the Commissioner of Health in the state of Massachusetts. His name was David Mulligan. His wife was an eighth-grade teacher, an eighth-grade maths teacher at the middle school. And he and I both spoke. We spoke to each other, and I said, "You know, it might not be a bad idea for you to come to a meeting of the K-8 School Committee to discuss these matters." And he said, "Well, frankly, I know that there's intimate activity in people who are from the sixth grade to the eighth grade, but not enough, not enough to even have a discussion about whether or not condoms will be made available to them. It's just not enough, not enough activity to do that kind of thing." But it might not be a bad idea to talk about why this was important. Brockton, at the time, was the city in Massachusetts that had the third highest incidence of AIDS. Third in the Commonwealth. Not because of, not because of what you might be thinking, but basically because of substance abuse, because of substance use. And so I thought it would be appropriate for our little K-8 school committee to hear that. The beginning of the meeting, I said that this is not going to be a discussion about making condoms available to middle school children, because that's not going to happen. It's not even going to be discussed. What I'd like you to have is some sort of explanation of why this was going on. So, we had a meeting. David didn't come to the meeting. He sent one of his representatives, and she gave an interesting discussion. At the end of the meeting, a guy sitting where Chief Clancy is sitting right now in the back of the room raised his hand. And the reason why I thought about this little story, and I'm going to try to make it shorter, is because that same person has responded to Sean's Facebook post. Anyway, this guy raised his hand, and he says, "Listen, I'm a Catholic, and if you try to give condoms to my daughter, I'm going to sue you." I said, "I won't give his name," but I said, "We heard the beginning of the meeting. We said that wasn't going to happen. We were having a discussion about something else. I don't care. I'm a Catholic. If you ever even try to do that, you'll be sued. Fine." Meeting was over. The next day, in the Patriot Ledger, the headline that dealt with our school committee meeting was, "K-8..." No, "Sixth through Eight School Committee Discusses Giving Condoms to Eighth Graders." Not a lie. It wasn't a lie, but it wasn't the truth either. And it was caused because somebody out in the audience decided that during a forum, they would raise their hand and say something like that. So that's the risk that we take sometimes when we do that. Story's not over, though, because the next morning, this next morning, a priest that I used to play basketball with on Tuesday nights at the whole school, who was actually... I guess my nickname when I played basketball was Elbows, because I learned how to make my height negligible. A priest that was worse with elbows than I was, he came to my house, knocked on the door, and he came in, and he wanted to talk about the meeting. And he says, "I'm thinking of excommunicating you for bringing this up, having you excommunicated." Wow. And my children were right there. So luckily, I...
That's why I don't see you in church anymore.
Luckily, I'm a product of Boston College. And when I went to Boston College, in order to graduate with a degree in anything, you had to take 27 credits of philosophy and 12 of theology. And I remembered Thomas Aquinas's double effect. And Thomas Aquinas's double effect says, basically, you can have an evil and a good result from the same act, and you have to measure these things. So I said to this priest, I said, "Father, we know that when a husband and a wife engage in intimate relationships, there can be two effects. One is it shows intimacy and love, and the other is they produce a child." I said, "What if, what if the husband, through a blood transfusion, had contracted AIDS? Is he then banned from ever showing his love in a physical way to his wife because of that? Or might condoms fall under... His using condoms fall under St. Thomas's double effect? That is a good effect to this possibly evil action." And he thought about it and left quietly, and didn't move to have me excommunicated that night. The end of the story is, the 22-member committee at the high school level that was discussing this curriculum, in which the word condom was used... They weren't giving out condoms at the high school either. They weren't going to do that. But in the protocols, the word condom was used, and out of the 22 members, one of them voted against the policy. And it was just my friend, Elbows, the priest, who did that, because the word condom was used, not because of what it said. Anyhow, I think what I'm trying to say, and I don't know why I went to this tale, but what I'm trying to say is that we will continue to allow citizens to speak on matters that are on the agenda, and if they want to before the meeting, alert us to matters that aren't on the agenda yet. On the other hand, there are other ways to get people who are board members or school committee members to understand where you're coming from. One is to call them. One is to write emails to them, whatever. Doesn't always have to be in a setting like this. Sometimes you can avoid getting nasty headlines in the paper if you do it different ways. That's the end of my report. Hope it was at least somewhat entertaining. New Business Veteran Services Officer.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Recently, the Assistant Town Administrator Kathy Keefe, Selectman Laura Howe, Dan Silvucci, and I interviewed several candidates for the position of Veteran Services Officer. We were fortunate to have received so many excellent applications for this position. Ultimately, we selected Shannon Burke of Abington to be the town's new Veteran Services Officer. Shannon is an Air Force veteran who served on the Security Forces Convoy team, guarding ICBM Minuteman III missiles. Shannon is unable to be here this evening, as she had a prior commitment. However, I would like to ask the board to vote to approve her appointment as the new town's VSO, conditional on the mutually agreed-upon terms outlined in the letter of appointment. And the letter of appointment is the standard letter of appointment we've used for the last few hires. And I know that the letter there is in the packet for you to sign. Shannon is eligible to begin her new position of VSO with the town on Monday, August 21st.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does anyone have any questions?
Who is going to be dealing with that office until she takes place?
So Sarah Lansing, our former VSO, did come back to process the July Veterans Checks, and we'll have her do that for August as well. And she's been wonderful, offering her time. And the other, she set that up before she left, for surrounding VSOs in surrounding towns, to take any calls and help out until we get someone in place.
That I liked about her.
She was great.
Okay. Seeing nothing else, all those in favor?
Aye.
Actor on the request of Adriana DiStefano, on behalf of the Whitman Cultural Council, to hold Whitman Day annually on the second Saturday of June.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second? Is Adriana here? Hi, Adriana. Would you like to say anything?
Do I have a couple seconds? I sit here.
You can sit right there.
Sorry.
I think the move makes sense, to have it be the same Saturday in June.
Yeah.
We don't have to go through this every year.
Exactly. So we just, first of all, wanted to thank you all for your partnership for the past couple of Whitman Days, as we tried to get everything off the ground and form the partnerships with the other town departments. And the idea on having it the same Saturday every year is just so everyone knows what to expect, and we don't have to do this every year.
Anyone have any questions?
We're going to have a rain date, in case... I hate to say it, but you never know.
The idea is that it's a rain or shine event.
Wow.
Yeah. As this year, you know, it did sprinkle, and the show did go on, regardless. The fire chief kept us safe and monitored the lightning and everything. The only reason why we would need to shut things down is if there was to be lightning, but with tents and everything. The rain was fine. We should be okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Adriana, thank you very much.
Oh, good night.
Take action to revoke the Class II Auto Dealers License for Legacy Auto Sales and Repair Incorporated, Willie Mereira, on the premises locator at 288 Essex Street for failure to provide proof of reinstatement of a surety bond as acquired by Mass General Law Chapter 140, Section 58.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Actor on the request of Chief Hanlon to appoint Christopher Lee to the position of Auxiliary Special Police Officer through June 30, 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Chief.
Thank you. So Officer Lee, just to give you a recap of his tenure here, he started with Whitman Police Department as an auxiliary officer in 1997. He transitioned to full-time in March of 2001. He worked as the School Resource Officer and assisted with Dare Camp for many years. And he also participated in the Special Olympics torch run on an annual basis for a lot of years. His personality worked well within the schools, with the faculty, as well as students, and he was known to all the kids and very well-liked over the years. He was also the safety officer when Sergeant Harry Bates, when he retired.
Wow.
So now it's Chris's turn to retire, and the safety officer position has been awarded to Officer Poirier, and I'm sure he's going to do just as good of a job. We're wishing Chris well in his retirement, but he's obviously not going far, because he wants to be appointed as an Auxiliary Special Officer. And as the board may remember, he was commended for his actions during a road job in May of 2021, where a motorist was having a medical episode, and Officer Lee was able to assist. So for all those reasons, and his background in his tenure here, I'd like to have him appointed as an Auxiliary Special Officer.
Is there any questions? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
You can stay there, Chief. Actor on the request of Chief Hanlon to appoint Peter Aiken to the position of Auxiliary Special Police Officer effective August 9, 2023, through June 30, 2024.
Yes, pending his upcoming...
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Okay.
So Detective Sergeant Aiken, he started with Whitman PD also as an auxiliary officer in 1992. From there, he went to Bridgewater State College PD from '94 to '98. From there, he went to Chatham PD from '98 to 2001. He returned to Whitman PD, where his father was also an officer here for many years. So he returned as a full-time officer in 2001. Detective Sergeant Aiken was on the SWAT team. He made detective, and then detective sergeant throughout his tenure. Kind of the long way home, I guess, for the number of different departments he worked with. He gained knowledge at each one and brought those back to Whitman. He's always been a hard worker, devoted to helping people, as well as solving cases as a detective. And he also doesn't want to go too far, because he also wants to be an Auxiliary Special Officer, so...
Any questions? All those in favor? And finally, actor on the request of Chief Hanlon to attend the IACP Annual Conference in San Diego in October.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions to the chief? Yes.
Do you go ahead?
Yeah, so this will be the first IACP given COVID. I tried to get to one a couple of years ago, and it just kept getting canceled for either COVID reasons, or one was down in Louisiana, and there was another hurricane or something that precluded that. So here we are. I'm trying to get to one, and the following year is going to be back here in Boston, so that'll be '24. I won't have to go out of the state for the IACP you mentioned, so...
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Standing the chief.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief. Next on the agenda, Leslie DiOrio, Mount Zion Cemetery.
May I get a cup of water? Yes. Hi.
Hey, Leslie, have a seat.
I have papers for you first.
Can I get you one? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mary. So what I presented to you is a letter that I sent to the DPW back in May. I didn't receive a response to this, but they did cover it in one of their board meetings. What I had requested was formal permission to clean the stones at Mount Zion Cemetery. I had been doing so for about a year. I had been working originally with Marie Leeler through the Historic Commission, and she had learned that the DPW basically maintains the grounds of the cemetery, but not the stones of the cemetery. Mount Zion qualifies as a national historic site due to the age of the oldest stone there, which is February 1733. And so, as a result, we can, as a town, obtain funding through the state of Massachusetts and community preservation funding for the upkeep of the cemetery, the stones itself, and some of the groundwork there. So what I've included is a copy of Terrafirma, which is a Massachusetts document instructing in some of the best practices in cemetery care, historic cemetery care, as well as a copy of my letter. The reason I didn't receive a response is they felt that while they were not going to "get in my way" and were willing to allow me to continue to the work there, they were not willing to give anyone official permission. They felt that there were a few reasons, I guess. I didn't hear from them directly, but I did hear about the contents of the meeting, that it should be families that gave permission. However, the challenge with that is it doesn't follow best practices in cemetery care, you But when you talk about cemetery care and who grants permission, it really is the grounds of the cemetery, which is the town of Whitman in this case, because Mount Zion is owned by the town of Whitman. It was given to the town of Whitman or procured by the town of Whitman in 1851 and was previously family burial ground site. When we talk about families granting permission, it is down to the third generation. So, for example, I can clean my great-grandmother's stone, but not my great-grandmother's stone, who's, you know, if I think about like maternal lines, they're buried at Mount Hope in Boston, but I can't just walk in and clean it because that is a maintained private cemetery. In this case, the town owns it, so I have to go to the town to ask for permission because it's not just a random place that I'm walking in and cleaning these sites. The reason I feel strongly that a person should ask the town for permission, and I'm coming to you for permission, is because a lot of damage can be done by just walking in and cleaning with any substance and not knowing what you're doing. So I've sought out training and have gone to lots of seminars. I've cleaned gravestones in every New England state, and I'm going to another one on Friday if anybody wants to join, I've got room in my car. So this is something that I care deeply about, and as I clean these stones, I actually keep a family tree. I go on Family Search, which is a free website that has a universal tree, and I've created documentation and pulled the official documents for every resident of that cemetery. So I thought I would come to you tonight, bringing Terrafirma with me, which is the best practices site and the letter that I sent to the DPW, and ask for your official permission to clean gravestones at Mount Zion, with also the idea that we probably do need a cemetery committee for Mount Zion since it's the only cemetery in Whitman that doesn't have one.
Does anyone have any questions, Leslie? Would someone like to move to give Leslie permission? Sure.
I'm Melissa Shnebel, the Chair of the Historic Commission, and I agree with everything Leslie said except for one thing. And that's, the state has the money for preservation, and she's right about the cemetery. We have money already, and I think I've spoken to you about this, we have $20,000 through the CPA. And we are going for matching grant with the state, and this cemetery should be on that group that we're looking to do. The way it goes is you get the money and you get the matching grant, and then you hire people that the state approves to come in, and they don't do the preservation, but I think Leslie's preservation idea is a good one. But it needs to be discussed, I think, with the Historic Commission as far as it goes because the thing is, when you were talking about the grant, my concern is that if we are applying and you are applying.
Oh, I'm not applying.
Okay, you're not applying.
I'm not applying.
That's what I wanted to be clear about.
Yeah.
So I think both, there are three cemeteries that really need to be watched. The one on Pine Street has quite a few in it, and that's probably the most ignored cemetery in the town. But you also have a Coldbrook one and you have Mount Zion. So the three of them, I think, will be going in as a packet. There are some already that are in, that have already gone through registration. So I think that it would be a continuation, and the grant comes out, the grant writing will start in September. And I've already talked to Kathy about getting together about that. So hopefully, if you want to work with us on that, that would be great. But I think until we get, until we have a clear funding on it, I've done a lot of gravestone cleaning, but I've never, I've just gone to whoever the head is in other states, there are people who are the head, and it is very dim in Massachusetts as to where you go. Not so much in this town because we have the DPW. But I think if you continue to do it, I think that it's great that you do it within the realm until we see if we can get the money.
Yep.
So that's the only thing I had to say is I agree with gravestone cleaning. And if you want to see a really good example of it, when you come off of 24 on 218, you'll see the cemetery right there. They've all been cleaned. And there are different ways that people do it, but those you can, you know, they really stand out if you've ever come off of the highway there.
You can see some of the work that we've, you know, Marie and I started, and I've been continuing. I'll give you a copy of the letter. So my request is, at this point, just for permission to clean there, not for applying for any grants or anything, because I've been working with, I've been talking with Michael, at the Historical Commission.
Yeah, but that's the thing is that I think that with things like that, it is better than to talk to one member of the commission that you come to a commission meeting.
Oh, he's been trying to get me in. I know.
Yeah, I know.
He's been trying to figure out when to put me on the agenda.
Right. So we had to go through a whole bunch of stuff for re, what's the word I want? Reestablishing the commission because of the sad loss of Marie. And now we're up and running, we've had a vote, we voted that our main project is going for the funding. Because if we get, and the state has told us that they think we have a very good chance of going forward, so the fact that we got the CPA money, we plan to use that, and we plan on our beginning. So the cemetery, as important as it is, I feel too that the, and I've said that here, the rules that have come in about the MTA and the buildings that we have to preserve in the town, and that's the part, is preserving the next hundred, because we've got quite a few done, and they're ready to go, but we have to find out the expense of having them go to the National Trust. And so that's, to me, the big thing is to stop any of our really valuable buildings and cemeteries from any further destruction. And we certainly have, I went through Mount Zion the other day, and the amount of GAR plaques in there is remarkable. And even though we don't have the GAR building, our history of the GAR has been so well preserved. And I think, hopefully, Abington has a new Historic Commission, and I'm very familiar with the Rockland ones, so that the three together doing the towns, I think we can get back to a really good picture of the way old Abington was at that period of time. So we're working with those commissions as well. So, but we did have a vote on our priorities at the last meeting. So, just so you know, I just wanted to clarify that.
No, that's great.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask Leslie, so I think this is a great idea, just you mentioned there's some training or certification you can get for future reference for this board?
It's not certification yet.
Is there some level of qualification we should be looking for when people come and request permission to clean gravestones?
There are some questions to ask them, like what are your techniques and what materials do you use? And I can write down what they are. They're the same questions that have been asked of me every time I've requested permission, like what do you use, what kinds of techniques? Basically, you want to hear that they are asking, they're using water or they're using D2, which is a biological substance. You never want to hear that they're using anything like soap or bleach or any kind of metal brush, because you do see something called sugaring, which is basically the stone breaking down where you can't read it, because sometimes someone will be well-intended, but they'll see like some darkening and go, oh, I can clean that with bleach, and you never want to do that, so. But I can write down some questions and send them along.
Question? Okay, thank you.
Question. The cleaning of the stone to be done by a professional team and not by volunteers?
The cleaning itself can be done by volunteers.
My question is, is if the stone is damaged?
Most of them are damaged.
I know, but I mean, say you break it in half or something or whatever, you never know.
You wouldn't break in half a stone by cleaning it. You'd break in half a stone by like moving it or something to that effect, and if you're talking about.
Never, because you never know. I'm just wondering, you know, insurance to cover something like that, you know, if there's any damage, especially those stones are so old.
Where the stones are very old, if you're planning on moving a stone, I think that would be a different question that they'd be asking you. If they're talking about actually restoring a gravestone, that's a different question other than cleaning a gravestone. I'm not actually moving any stones around or resetting them. If we got to a point, you know, with the Historical Commission, if we got to a point where we were looking to do that, I think that would be a different inquiry.
And have you gone to the commissioners on this DPW? Because do they maintain those cemeteries?
They maintain the grounds only.
Grounds only, okay.
So you're looking for us to grant you permission to?
To clean stones.
To clean stones. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion, any further questions, Leslie?
I think it's excellent that you're volunteering to do this, just working closely with the Historic Commission. I think that's keeping that communication, that relationship close.
They've been trying to get me in for a meeting for a while now, like their reformation, so.
Seeing nothing else, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for this material. Actor on the request of Ken Leila to place a bench on the Town Hall lawn. Ken, be my guest.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ken Leila. What I'm looking for is one of the park benches to be placed on the front lawn. The location that I'm looking for, if possible, is at the, on the grass of the Town Hall, roughly at the sidewalk. It's to the, as you're facing the Town Hall from the street, it would be to the right of the sign for the Town Hall. Presently, there is a bench at the far end where there's a walkway. I'm looking for somewhere in the middle to place the bench. I've already placed the order through the DPW to have the, I guess, the plaque put on the bench and the bench to be ordered, and I just have to get the okay from the Board of Selectmen to be able to place it on the Town Hall at my location, or if you cannot approve the location that I wish to seek, if you could give me a location that might work. And basically, the only reason I want to put it there, and the main reason, is my wife was the chair prior to her demise, I guess you'd say, of the Historical Commission, and she also had a vision for someday to place a historical museum in this town. And I wanted that place, I think I gave a, basically a letter to you folks that basically what it's gonna say is "In memory of Marie Leila, past chair, Historical Commission, a passion for the history of Whitman, and a vision for the historical museum." I included, if you want a picture of where I'm looking to have this bench placed. And I'll keep that to you. Basically, there's the bench that's there, there's the sign, I'm looking to have it right in that location.
Right in the middle.
Ken, that's where that tree came down, right? In that area there?
I don't recall exactly where the tree came down.
Well, you see, you can see in the front lawn where the new round grass is growing in a round circle.
They must have done a good job by filling it in because I didn't notice.
It's right where the tree was?
Yes.
We reached out to Bruce Martin, the DPW Superintendent, as the DPW installs the memorial benches. There are already six benches at Town Hall. There has been a bench moratorium in the town park for many years, and there are currently 52 benches already in the park. The DPW has been suggesting to residents that if they would like to purchase a bench, there is room for a few more at the Memorial Field, and there is plenty of room on Coldbrook Boulevard. So while there is space, you know, a section there, and I think that is because of the tree that came down, I mean, they're pretty full here, and the park is definitely not an option, but it would be Memorial Field, as I mentioned, or Coldbrook Boulevard, if not here, so.
My only.
Does anyone have an issue with placing it here?
No, I don't. I think that's where it deserves to be.
And the main reason why I say, I agree with Laura, and the main reason why I say that's a good place for it, she was, her passion was the history of this town. She dug deep into the history of this town, and she was on the Historical Commission, and her vision, like I had said, was for the historical museum. Someday, hopefully, we see it in this town like other towns have, but mainly because she was involved with the town and the Historical Commission, the Town Hall would be the ideal place. And I know I've already spoken to Bruce Martin, the Superintendent at the DPW, prior to coming to the Board of Selectmen, and basically, he told me exactly what Mary Beth Cottrell just said, is the town park is full, that I'd have to place it on the Boulevard. Right now, my personal feelings of the Boulevard are, without going in depth, is, I'd rather not, is, and this is why I'm looking to place it on the Town Hall, I just, my first election was out by the sidewalk. I want it to be seen by people as they walk by, as they walk by, if they need a place to sit, they can sit there. Whether they read the plaque or not, it's just in honor of my wife.
Amen.
Yes, I did have a problem, I don't have a problem, I'm just looking at the town seal on another document we have in front of us, and that tree is right there in the middle. That's kind of my only hesitation. If you'll allow, I'd ask maybe Ms. Shnebel, who is still here, and Elaine, another member of the Historical Commission, is there another location of historical significance in the town that might kind of meet what Ken is seeking here?
Oop, the tree is gone.
I'm sorry, I don't get your point.
The town seal has the tree in it, the tree's gone.
It's just that, it's, I don't know, it feels weird to replace the tree with a bench, given that it's our actual seal.
We can't replace Marie, and we can give her honor for what she's done for this town. I feel that's a wonderful place for it, in memory of such a strong, good woman.
Thank you, Laura.
Do you want me to come up?
Sure.
I'm happy to sit down, I can back here.
Okay, well, they might not hear you on up. Do you have an opinion?
I always have an opinion. I went with Jessica, too. I think we definitely need to do something in Marie's name. I agree 100% with Ken, and I did quite a bit of work with Marie, particularly with Historic Commission in the diar. We collaborated on many things, which is, that's how you got me. So she talked me into joining. Elaine Bergeron on our committee, we've been talking about this quite a bit, and what we had liked the idea of is replacing the tree and having a plaque put by the tree in Marie's name. And that way, it would be forever there, growing, and instead of having it damaged or, you know, somebody marking it or whatever. So I thought Elaine was the one, and I don't know, Ken and I haven't really talked about it too much, we've certainly talked a lot, but we haven't talked about that.
I had no idea where the tree was, to be honest with you, I'm sorry to say.
Yeah, when the tree came down, the next meeting that we had, and Michael Ganshert was the acting chair at the time, Elaine brought that to us, and I thought it was an exceptional idea, and we all liked it a lot. I do like, I like the bench idea too, but I also think there are certainly, one of, there are two projects that we're working on to try to complete that have been kind of out there, and one of them is going to be named after Marie, and that was, we have many stones with plaques on them in the town, so we're putting together a flyer, and the flyer will have a listing of all the stones, and it'll be at Town Hall, and Marie had named it the Rock Tour, so we want to make it the Marie Leila Rock Tour. So now you're blowing all the surprise, Ken, thanks a lot. But.
Whoops.
But I also think that as we move forward, if we're, if we're successful in what I had talked about before, I think we're gonna have quite a few places that hopefully will go on the trust. And one of the people that I worked with greatly was Martha Campbell. And Martha Campbell's names are on things that are on the National Trust. And I think that Marie started a lot of the things and was worked on a lot of the things. I was not here in some of them. So I think that we can, if we can get a tree up, I think that the DPW probably, you know, I think if they could put the tree, and we could get a plaque and have the plaque by Marie's name, it brings it back to a unified front to the, and not a small tree, you know, not a little tree, but a sizable tree so that you can, you know, it matches, so that it can grow with the size of the other ones. And I think that the DPW expertise would be good for that. But we were very unified on that, and the other thing was that we agreed at our last meeting that it would be the Marie Leila Rock Tour, because we thought that was a really clever name for it. But we're trying to get a listing of all of the stones, because there's so many of them. We have a list of about eight now, and when the two grannies came to town, we were the commission that they met, was not the society. And so that, we brought it up then to them as well. So I think that that, those are other ways. I think if, to be specific, yeah, I know, I know, I know what you're talking about. To be specific about other things, I think that as we go forward, if we have more places, there are new places that we can put things that Marie worked on, that we can put a plaque or have something. The other project that we're working on. The other project that we're working on, and I'm talking to people now about signs. We had signs for the oldest houses in the town, and that's been kind of dropped, and we're picking that up again. Unfortunately, the sign painter died, and so we have to go through making a whole new contract. So we have those three things, the writing of the grant and the Rock Tour and the re-establishing of the signs, historic signs. So those things, I think, are... We'll remember her always.
Well, can I ask you a question? Are you saying the bench cannot go there, or it can?
I'm not saying it can't. That's up to the DPW.
Oh, okay. Can the tree go back further?
We're talking about the tree going in where the tree went down, because they were matching trees when they went in. So we're bringing back the match. In other words, we're restoring the history.
But it's back further. It's not that close to the sidewalk, correct?
No, I don't think.
It overgrew maybe in its branches, but the tree roots itself, and the tree itself goes back further.
Yeah, you can't... Yeah, I don't think you can put it in there, can you?
Well, I don't know. How far back is... I mean, here's the foliage.
I don't know. I'm not a tree expert, so...
The bench would be right there. It would take up probably this much room if you put the tree back here somewhere.
Yeah, I don't...
Probably 10, 12 feet back.
Exactly.
Why can't you plant the tree where they want to plant the tree and put the bench on the front of it towards the sidewalk?
That's what I think Ken said.
That way, you sit in the bench, and you're in the shade.
I don't have a problem. Are you talking under the tree, or are you talking on the sidewalk?
You want it in the tree.
Where I want it, at the sidewalk, on the grass, but at the sidewalk.
At the sidewalk and with the tree behind the bench.
Right.
You know, maybe six or seven feet behind the bench.
Oh, yeah. The tree should be behind the bench, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Because Marie would want us all to have shade.
Would someone like to make a motion to follow the direction of the Historic Commission?
Out of respect.
Excuse me? I'm speaking. If we could have a motion to...
We don't have any jurisdiction over those. As long as you know that, it's the DPW that does. I'm just giving you my opinion. You asked my opinion.
Oh, but the DPW already told me to come to the board to get the approval.
Okay, so it's up to them, yeah.
What we could do is we could support...
Your position?
Support what you've just told us, replacing the tree by planting a tree with a Marie Layla bench in front of it.
Perfect.
You like that?
Someone like to make that motion?
You might have to revisit that, only because...
Well, we don't have to...
Go ahead.
We don't have to talk for a half an hour about doing that right now.
You don't need my opinion anymore.
So thank you for your input, though. Okay, Sean's made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
So we're going to have a tree and a bench with a message on it. All was in favor.
Aye. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Great tribute.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You, too.
Okay, next item. You had your hand up. Did you want to say something? I'm sorry, Mary Beth.
Oh, that was earlier on Chief Hanlon's... Just following the travel guidelines.
He has to follow the policy, right?
Right.
Okay. Peaceful Meadows.
Yes.
Right of first refusal process.
Last... Thank you. Last Friday, I met with John Hornster of Hornster Farms in Norwell, Jay Rosa of the State Department of Agricultural, Scott McFadden of the Wildlands Trust, Town Council Peter Sumners, and Selectman Justin Evans, and also the Assistant TA Kathy Keith, to discuss the upcoming auction of Peaceful Meadows. John Hornster expressed his interest in purchasing the Peaceful Meadows parcel, which contains the ice cream stand, the dairy store, the barns, and the original farmhouse. If he were the successful bidder at the auction, he would plan to have a working dairy farm at the location. He would plan to maintain the ice cream stand and possibly expand the dairy store. Hornster Farm currently makes dairy deliveries in Whitman now. Mr. Hornster is also interested in purchasing the 55 acres of agricultural land in conjunction with the APR acquisition program offered through the state, if it were financially feasible. A right-to-farm local option would benefit the town as it relates to the town's interest in a possible agricultural preservation restriction entered into with the state. With the permission of the board, I plan to meet with the Bylaw Study Committee to create a right-to-farm bylaw for the town's approval at an upcoming town meeting, even if this purchase does not come to fruition. I believe having Hornster Farms, another dairy farm, take over the Peaceful Meadows property would be a positive outcome for the town. The residents would be able to still enjoy the property, the ice cream stand and dairy store that they have come to love in our community, and the 55 acres of agricultural land would be preserved in the future. If you're not familiar with the Hornster Farms in Norwell, I'd suggest that you stop by and see their Norwell operation. I'm sure that you won't be disappointed. Justin also has some information, I believe, regarding the 55-acre agricultural land being auctioned by Peaceful Meadows using CPA funds.
Yes. So I did a little looking into how other towns have acquired property like this in the past. So if the purchase of the 55 acres, if the winning bid was... If the winning bidder intended to change the use of the property, the town would have the ability to match that winning bid and purchase it for ourselves. We could either do something like that and put it into the agricultural... Put an agricultural preserve restriction on it, like Mr. Hornster's suggesting, or we could purchase it with ARPA funds or town funds and use it for municipal use. Or what a lot of towns around us have done is use community preservation funds and preserve it as open space, potentially farmland, potentially trails, what have you. So I looked into it, reached out to the town accountant today, actually, and found that we have about $273,000 in available CPC funds between open space and the general purpose CPC funds, if we wanted to exercise that right. We can also bond the purchase if we wanted to use CPC funds and make those payments with community preservation funds that we take in every year, which is about $200,000 a year. So the town does have some options if we were to choose to purchase the property. However, if the winning bid is, you know, a farmer like Mr. Hornstra, we would have no opportunity to exercise the right of first refusal, nor do I think we would want to.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions?
How much do you think it's going to go for?
Oh, that's really hard to say.
A lot more than what we got in the community preservation?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
I can say a similar parcel in Rockland two years ago went for about $800,000.
How much?
$800,000 for a slightly smaller, it was like 36, 38 acres. This is 55. This is pretty wet, so I don't know how that will affect things.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the update.
Good stuff. Thank you.
And discuss the request to reduce the speed limit on Auburn Street. Mary Beth?
Yes. I think we have a resident here that would like to speak on that issue.
Bob Kimball, Village at Auburnville. We did submit a petition back in 2021 to the Board of Selectmen about the reducing the speed. So I'll just give that to you. That was put by a resident at the time. Thank you for letting me come before the board to discuss this. We want to limit the speed on Auburn Street. Our DPW department has limited the speed very well for over a year and a half, and we appreciate that. But moving forward, we're concerned about the speed. Once the new pavement is put in, that's going to be a superhighway down there. And I know that a lot of times when you try to put a speed limit on a road, they do all kinds of fancy tracking of the speed, and then they say, "That's what the speed limit should be." Well, I would like to see the speed limit put on before we get into that position. Prior to construction, sections of the road had a 45 mile per hour on some of the sections. Over the last 25 years, that section of Auburn Street between Hog Memorial Drive and the rural skating rink has changed considerably. It was a rural area. When I lived in another town, when I came driving down Auburn Street, I thought I was in the country. It's no longer that. We've had over 165 new units of housing put in in that area over the last 20 years. There's another development potentially going in, the design phase now. We, as the residents of Auburnville and the people who live along the street, would like to have the speed limit at 35 miles an hour from Bedford Street to Captain Allen Way. From Captain Allen Way to the Brockton Line, a speed limit of 40 miles per hour would be acceptable. That is similar to what is on Temple Street right now. There should be no passing between Bedford Street and Captain Allen Way. Maybe, I believe there used to be a passing lane beyond, but definitely not until we get to Captain Allen Way. Reasons for the 35 mile an hour speed limit? There are two curves on the road. One of them is minor. The other curve is pretty significant at Beaver Street, as Mary Beth is well aware of. The other streets in town that have speed limits of 35 miles or lower are straighter for a longer period of time, approximately the same width. When we exit Auburnville Way, we look to the east. There's an issue with sightline. Cars coming around the corner, if they're coming around at 50, 55 miles an hour, we don't have time to get it out of the way. There's no sidewalks on that section of Auburn Street. We're trying to do that, but that's another issue, and we're not here for that today. We do have some residents of Auburnville. We're a senior community that no longer can drive, and some of the people that can't drive do walk up to the stores up on Bedford Street. It's not suggested, but they do. There are a number of other state roads in Whitman that have a speed limit of 35 miles an hour, so that's why we're thinking it's reasonable. I took a look at some of the streets in the community. Route 18, that's a major road going through, that's 45 miles an hour. That's controlled by lights at some of the major intersections, so on and so forth. It's a main artery from New Bedford to Boston, the old road. Temple Street, that's got a 40 mile an hour speed limit. That's wider than Auburn Street. That's a straight line for 1.4 miles and has sidewalks on both sides. Plymouth Street, which is a state highway, stated numbered road, has no sidewalks, number of curves, similar to Auburn Street. Speed limit's 35 miles an hour. Essex Street, it's a street that has a sidewalk on one side from Plymouth Street to the police station. It's a straight shot for three quarters of a mile, sidewalk on one side. It's mostly business, not residential, and that's only 30 miles an hour. Similar street, straight shot. Washington Street, it goes through the center of town. It's 35 miles an hour, except at Auburn Street where it's 20 miles an hour and in the section of the square. Half that street has sidewalks. That's Route 14, the same Route 14 that Auburn Street is, 35 miles an hour. And I'm doing all the streets. I'm not, you know, up and down. Franklin Street, state numbered highway, 27, sidewalk on one side, straight shot for three quarters of a mile, slight curve, that's 40 miles an hour. South Ave, Franklin to Plymouth Street, 35 miles an hour, straight road again, sidewalk on one side. Auburn Street, 14, Route 14, Washington Street to School Street, that's 40 miles an hour. That's .7 miles, straight shot. We have a number of accidents at Havitt Street. Maybe the speed limit on that road's too high. So I'd like you to consider giving us 35 miles an hour between Bedford Street and Captain Allen Way. There's a lot of residents in that area. It's changed. The road isn't straight, and I think it would be a good improvement to the town of Whitman. Do you have any questions or anybody else? There's a few people that have come with me tonight, and we've all been in favor of this for a long time.
Thank you very much. You certainly make a good case. Anybody? Yes, Mary Beth?
Okay. So as Mr. Kimball stated, the current speed limit from Route 18 to Beaver Street is 40 miles per hour, you know, pre-construction, and the speed limit from Beaver Street to Brockton is 45 miles per hour. And we did verify that with Chief Hanlon. There is a process in place for the town to make a request to the Mass DOT District Office to request special speed regulations. There'd be a traffic study done, and there's all kinds of steps, if that's something that you would like to consider. I just didn't know if Chief Hanlon wanted to say anything on this issue.
Yeah, mascot, welcome down.
Thank you. So we get requests from time to time for traffic enforcement, and a lot of times that involves speeding. We also have a couple of sign boards that we can put out, and we do our own little traffic survey to see where we land as far as how many cars are speeding, how fast they're going. And those two, the speed boards, record data for us. So Officer Poirier puts that speed board out, and he turns it off, so you can't get feedback on how fast you're going. It doesn't flash at you. Your speed doesn't show up. And that's how we do the survey. We just... But it records in the background for every car that comes by. So we did a speed study in March and April of 2022 to include the area of Auburn Street at Auburnville Way. And the speed signs were put in place, like I said, recorded speeds in each direction for a week. The signs' display function wasn't active, so it didn't give that feedback. The average speed was 34.7 miles per hour heading westbound towards Brockton and 40.1 miles per hour heading eastbound toward Route 18. As was mentioned, you know, the DPW did a great job so far of slowing people down, and I... We understand the concerns.
But just speed board up today?
I feel as well, right? So once that gets smooth pavement on it, I think just the natural inclination, maybe for a lot of people, certainly for the majority, is to, you know, you're not going over bumps. So to put the pedal down a little bit more than you normally would, just because of the road surface is free of defects. So that's really the issue, I think, correct, is not just the speed, but once it gets paved correctly, we're going to maybe see that increase. So as Mary Beth said, in order to change the speed limit, since it is a numbered state road, it takes more than a vote from the Board of Selectmen and new signage from the DPW. The process is spelled out. I provided some information to Mary Beth at the time, but it has to be approved, and there's a little flow chart that probably makes the most sense. You have to send a request from the town to the district office. Then there's some communication on the procedures to follow. The proposed speed zones with numerical limits are received from the city or town with an engineering justification. Then they review that data with Mass DOT and the Traffic and Safety Section, and then they prepare the regulation. And then it comes before, I believe, the board at that time for approval. So it's not as easy as just saying, "Let's change the signs and get it done." I wish it was that easy, because I think we're probably all in agreement that those speeds are too high. When the speeds are that high, it does make it difficult for us as well when we are doing traffic enforcement out there when it's that limit. It looks like probably a lot more cars are speeding, traveling at that rate or a little bit higher even, and, you know, we can pull over cars. How many citations we're going to issue is... Depends on how many miles over the speed limit. So if you start at a higher number where the speed limit is, then you're going to... There's a little leeway usually there, you know, about five miles an hour or so, whether we're going to even pull the car over or what the situation is. The other thing is, we're going to have to wait till the road gets paved and properly surfaced to do all of this, because if you do it now and there's defects in the road and the cars aren't going as fast as we think they're going to in the future, that's going to skew the results on the traffic survey that we're going to have to perform through the state.
With all due respect to the previous speaker, of course, it's going to be much higher, and you're going to have a speed limit sign of 40 miles an hour on the road. They're going to go 40 or 45 or 50. That's why we're suggesting that when we have a new paved surface, either we put no signs up for the speed limit, or we put signs up at 35 miles an hour. As soon as you put up the 40 miles an hour, people are going to go faster than you.
As soon as you put up the 40 miles an hour, people are going to go faster than that and your survey's going to show that your traffic's going faster than that.
Can I ask you a question? I noticed when I drive down it, preparing for this, there are no speed limits.
They took the speed limit signs down.
They took it down on purpose?
On purpose and put the 25 mile an hour speed limit sign up for the construction.
I didn't even see that one. Way in the beginning. Yeah, I drove the whole length, but on the second half, there is the 40.
Mary Beth, want to put a cap to this discussion?
Sure. So I think that maybe what we should do is wait until after the roads are completely paved and that maybe you could do that sign, I mean, that, you know, the same survey that you did or test to see what the numbers come in at.
Yeah, we can compare it to the previous one.
Right. And come back and see where that is.
Well, but then, as the chief said, we can't, a vote by this board doesn't mean anything.
No, absolutely not.
So we can put in process the...
Can we start the process now so we be ready to do it quickly as soon as this surface is done? Otherwise, if you wait and start the process a month and a half or maybe three years from now, I don't know, maybe a month, month and a half from now, then we're still in a long period of time that the speed limit's up. So I'd like to get the process started now at a minimum. So when we're ready and the chief puts out the signs, we write into it and down to the DOT.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah. Okay, tell us what the motion is.
Start the process now.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
So if the board is in favor of reducing the speed limit, then yes, we could start the process with the DOT.
That's, that will be the correct vote to decide to start the process.
Right, great, great.
Obviously, the signs can't be changed or altered to what they were previously. That's my point.
Good question. At what point in the process do we need to provide data from traffic studies to the DOT?
I think the state comes out and does that.
Yep, MassDOT comes out and does it.
Correct.
Okay, so we can start this process and get them out right away?
Right.
Chief, is that considered thickly settled now with the housing? Same thing with from Route 18 up to Washington Street, all the houses? Should be considered thickly settled.
I think that's why it hasn't changed.
Right.
So that's going to be part of the study.
Right. So I have a meeting Thursday, I'll bring it up.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to start immediately? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And the last item on the agenda is to set the meeting schedule for the rest of August.
The opioid vigil is on Tuesday, August 29th.
Thank you. I couldn't, I couldn't find it. August 29th for the opioid vigil, Massasoia Community College, 6 o'clock.
The Tuesday, yeah.
Thanks, thanks, Sean. Okay, set the meeting schedule for August 15th. Anybody have any ideas? Meeting in a couple of weeks? Let me check.
The 15th will be two weeks.
Okay. I'm just checking.
The 22nd?
Just to make sure, but I think anything is fine.
How about a meeting on the 22nd?
Excuse me. I told Laurie if you would still that I will not be in town that day.
22nd?
Yes, without state.
Oh, you mean Laurie left the state?
Okay.
Justin's the clerk.
I'm the clerk. We've held meetings without a recording secretary before if we still want to meet or give me the 15th.
Okay, folks, make a decision. 15th to 22nd.
Either one for me?
Crooked.
We've got a middle school building committee and a community preservation committee on the 15th.
Oh, okay. Okay, let's do the 22nd and we'll have to just do it without you.
Have Laurie do it.
And we'll let, we'll let our clerk take the minutes.
It's going to be a good recording for her.
Okay, so it's going to be the 22nd. Okay, and now the last item on the agenda is the town administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just have one comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This evening you went into executive session before you had the open meeting. Would it be possible to put on your agenda that the open meeting won't start any earlier than like 6:45 so people that are coming to the meeting don't have to come at 6 o'clock? Just sometimes, so it just makes it a little bit easier for people that want to come in.
Okay, yeah, we can try to estimate.
Yeah, estimate, they won't start any earlier than, and then people don't have to see him 45 minutes away. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the input.
Thank you for your research.
You're welcome.
TA report?
Yeah, TA, TA's report and then we're done.
Right, very quickly. Channel 5, Channel 25, news zip trip to Whitman. Just a reminder that Channel 25 Zip Trip to Whitman is scheduled for Friday, August 11th from 8 a.m. to 10 a.m. There's a great lineup scheduled showcasing the best of Whitman, so please come down to the Whitman Park, the Essex Street side of the Whitman Park Pond area on the morning of August 11th, or tune into Channel 25 News from 8 to 10 to view the program. The other item is Whitman Recreation Department is hosting a movie night also on August 11th, Friday evening, August 11th. The featured movie is Light Year and the movie night will be featured at the Whitman Town Park Upper Ball Field. This movie will begin at 7:45 p.m., is free to Whitman residents. This is a family event, bring your chair, blanket, and bug spray and enjoy the movie. And the third thing I just wanted to mention quickly is that I did work on forming the Al's Carlton Land Committee that we had spoken about the last meeting to discuss the best option for the land, which was gifted to the town by the Cartons. Currently, the committee consists of myself, John Galvin, Eric Jubert Briganderson, Ken Laitel, and either Sandra Cortez or Brian Lapierre from the Conservation Committee. And June O'Leary has also expressed an interest to being on this committee. I haven't connected with her yet. Matt Monroe met with Rockland and according to the latest email, he is still planning on having further discussions with them on moving forward with his idea. And I'll be scheduling the first meeting with the committee in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you very much.
You want some? That's it.
Motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, we're out of here.
Okay.